A half mile extension makes the gold line the longest light rail route at 31 miles. And it covers stops from LA's Union Station through Pasadena all the way to Azusa. A total of 27 stops.
It means less congestion as we're going and I'm excited to be here today with my daughter. We're gonna ride the first train, make her a little bit of history.
I think it's fantastic. Just like most people, the 210 has become a parking lot.
And there's even better news. Regional and city leaders hope to get funding for an extra extension even further into the inland empire. That is now in the design stages.
Are we going to stop in Azusa?
No.
Are we going to go at least to Clermont?
Yeah.
Are we going to go to Ontario?
Yeah.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says the extension will be good not only for San Gabriel Valley residents, but for all Angelinos.
We want to come in here. We want to use Ontario as an airport, not just LAX. We want to see a vibrant region that eases congestion for everybody.
This is definitely a greener alternative than the 210 freeway.
This extension becomes the first rail line paid for with Measure R transportation funds to open to the public. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And city leaders in May will open a new rail line all the way to Santa Monica as well. While three African-American women were honored for blazing a trail in LA's transportation infrastructure, Gil Reyes has more on their achievements at a special breakfast in downtown.
Two by land, one by air. Black female standouts in the field of public transit discuss inspiration during African-American History Month.
I think about people like Bessie Coleman. And Bessie was the first female aviator, but also African-American female aviator in the country. And she went to France and learned how to speak French in order to get her pilot's license because she couldn't do that in the US. So I think she's a testament to perseverance.
Perseverance. Also a quality found in Los Angeles World Airport's executive director, Deborah Flint. Flint, who's helping to reinvent LAX with an ambitious $8.5 billion renovation, is honored at this breakfast in downtown LA. Also honored, Long Beach Transit Deputy Chief Deborah Johnson. Johnson, who's working to expand Long Beach's electric bus fleet to reduce pollution, says networking is key to her success.
Know what's going on, having the opportunity to interface with those in the community. Because oftentimes, if you stay within your own certain area, one may not be as knowledgeable and adept at what's going on.
African-American women paving the way for improved mass transit. Over at LA Metro, where five major rail projects are underway, Metro Deputy Chief and Honoree Stephanie Wiggins says mentors paved the way for her success.
Here at Metro, I've been fortunate to be mentored by our Chair, Margaret Lee Thomas, our Board Member, Jackie Dupont Walker, even Supervisor Solis. In the short time that she's been on the Board of Supervisors has proven to be a mentor. So mentors come in all shapes and sizes, and they're truly a blessing.
In the careers of female transportation trailblazers. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
All three honorees want to see more opportunities for women and small businesses to improve mass transit in LA County. While the Aliso Canyon gas leak has gone down as one of the worst gas spills in California history, the leaking gas well, which started near Porter Ranch last October, was plugged several weeks ago. But as Anna Marcos reports, the leak has left a dirty problem in its wake. Anna?
Yana, the Aliso Canyon gas leak may be capped, but the problems are far from over. This park, Holly Burnson Park, is now closed to media and residents alike, as crews work to clean up an oily residue left by the leak.
How can you breathe in motor oil and think that that's okay?
The oily brown spots have appeared on the outside of homes, and now residents returning to Porter Ranch after months of living in hotels have discovered that parks where their children play are also contaminated. Cleaning crews with face masks are cleaning up the mess at the Holly Burnson Park. The Aliso Canyon gas leak lasted four months and caused the relocation of thousands of families. So you don't feel safe enough to return to your home yet?
No, I do not. We do not know what was in the gas. It is a proprietary trade secret.
The oil residue problem started back in December.
We were attempting to stop the leak by pumping liquids directly down the leaking well, which didn't work too well, as you might recall. And so there was some blowback of material.
Residents complained about the residue then, but say the gas company did nothing until community members discovered residue at the park and complained to the Parks Department. I thought the county had given it a clean bill of health.
The county had given it a clean bill of health, and the county did not want to come back out to reexamine it until Parks Department demanded they do so, with the pushing of the local residents.
But the kids are playing on that stuff.
It's not gonna hurt you. Public health says don't touch it. We agree. You know, it's not gonna kill you.
But officials monitoring the air for methane, benzene, and other chemicals disagree. They say long-term health effects are still unknown, and they're still trying to figure out what exactly was in the gas leak. Even now that the well is plugged, they say methane levels at times rise to three times the normal levels.
We've never seen anything even remotely like this.
Is it catastrophic?
Oh, yeah.
They send these stupid flyers out every week, and they say safety's our priority. That's their motto. What a joke. What a joke.
The good part of this story is people from Porter Ranch are starting to come home, and that's a good thing.
I'm not asking for anything monetary. I'm just saying, clean up your mess.
SoCal gas officials will also visit 140 homes to check out complaints of oily residue there. And other parks are also scheduled for cleaning. Meanwhile, the Holly Burnson Park remains closed until further notice. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Anyone wanting to report oily residue on their property can visit alisoupdates.com. While a new report says Los Angeles World Airport still has a long way to go to improve the passenger experience, city officials hope an online tool makes it easier for immigrants in LA to become US citizens, and a Sun Valley family rises above the ashes. All these stories in City B. LA World Airport, the city-owned entity that operates LAX, still has significant work to do to address impending traffic jams in and around the terminals, to upgrade passenger experiences, and to improve airport business practices. That's according to a report issued by LA City Controller Ron Galperin. Consultants warn that the $5 billion modernization program to overhaul Terminal 2, plans to add a consolidated rental car facility, and link the whole airport to a new metro station via 2.2-mile automatic people mover, will greatly increase traffic and reduce parking in LAX's central terminal area during construction. Issues that LAUHA has not sufficiently identified or adequately addressed, Galperin said. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently announced a new program with the Los Angeles Public Library to help immigrant Angelinos apply for American citizenship. Citizenship Works 2.0 is a website and mobile app designed to give lawful permanent residents step-by-step instructions as they guide through their naturalization applications. The new pilot program is part of the mayor's Step Forward LA Initiative, which focuses on encouraging more than 350,000 legal permanent resident immigrants in LA to become US citizens. Four library branches have teamed up with the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to dedicate space, train staff, computers, and other resources to assist with the use of Citizenship Works 2.0. This pilot builds on the resources already available in citizenship corners located in all 73 library branches, where residents can access tools, sample test materials, instructional DVDs, and more.
What a better place than the public library in a community to welcome new Americans in and to provide information and answers to questions that they have.
Selected officials and community members helped celebrate the grand opening of the Centro Batonero Mazatlan Restaurant in Sun Valley. The opening comes in a space next door to another restaurant by the same owner that was gutted by arsonists several months ago. Now, the owners decided to rebuild and create a new business, providing employment for many of its displaced workers. The restaurant owner said he was able to push forward thanks to the community and Council District 6.
Being that we have the support of the community and our local politicians gives us the fuel to come back.
The councilwoman makes that one of her main priorities, is to make sure that businesses are taken care of, whether it's through supporting them, getting small loans, or to support them and getting their feet off the ground.
Renewable energy is helping former felons renew their lives. As Gil Reyes reports, the future looks bright when harnessing the sun.
A solar panel installation program is providing second chances to people like David Andrade. Andrade had spent nine years behind bars.
I just told myself that at the beginning of that time, I grew up in there, I want a career. I want a job. I want to stay out of trouble, and I want a family. My friend told me about Homeboy Industries, so did a family member, so I decided to come down, I checked them out.
For more than 25 years, Homeboy Industries has helped former gangbangers re-enter the workforce. Its founder, Father Greg Boyle, has helped put people to work through the Homeboy Bakery, Homegirl Cafe, also the Homeboy Solar Panel Installation Training Program. The big announcement today, more than 100 former felons have been chosen for installation training this year, thanks in part to a $100,000 grant from AT&amp;T.
As a former LAPD officer, now reserve officer, I understand that it's vital for former offenders to have good opportunities. Rarely did I ever arrest an individual who had a good-paying job.
And so for each one of you who has had the strength to turn around your life, know that at City Hall, we promise to be there with you every step of the way.
And also to collaborate with groups like Homeboy and others who are making these changes possible. Finding, training, providing employment opportunities.
Last year, more than 80 people graduated from training at East Los Angeles Skill Center before landing good-paying jobs. Andrade has a job too. As Assistant Program Coordinator for the Solar Panel Installation Program, he helps trainees find the confidence to succeed. In Chinatown, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The program has trained more than 500 people in solar panel installation over the past decade. While a trip to the zoo doesn't get more up close and personal than this, kids at the LA Zoo got treated to a new type of touchy-feely experience, the hippo encounter. Anna Marcos takes us there.
This mouth-gaping first encounter with a hippo would be enough to make anyone think twice about getting closer. But the kids are game as they take part in the LA Zoo's new hippo encounter. A hands-on, behind-the-scenes experience where you get to watch the creatures eat, learn about them, touch them, and get very up close and personal indeed.
I've touched different kinds of animals before, like furry, scaly, but I've never touched like bumpy and hard before. The sweat, I didn't really want to touch that. I thought it was a little gross.
They have a special sweat that they secrete that keeps them moist when they come out of the water. It protects their skin. It also has some healing properties in it.
The two hippos here are baby Rosie, who was born one and a half years ago, weighing 60 pounds. She now weighs more than 1,100 pounds. And close by is Mama Mara, a 3,500-pound giant.
People really enjoy it. They have a great time. They're actually surprised and shocked at how big they are and how friendly they are up close.
Well, it seems a safe bet that a friendly hippo is better than an unfriendly one. Kids big and small came away with more confidence and more insight when it comes to befriending the world's third-largest land mammal. But oops, there's the gaping jaw again. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The hippo encounter happens at the LA Zoo every Saturday and Sunday at noon. Tickets are $15, and that's on top of the zoo's regular admission. And it's better to make reservations ahead of time. While commuters at Union Station are being transported not only to their destination, but to a zen-like environment that calms the soul. The smooth sound of the horn echoes through downtown's majestic Union Station, uplifting the spirit of daily commuters and giving them an opportunity to relax and unwind. The calming ambiance is part of a month-long series put on by online radio station Dublab and Metro Art.
We wanted to simply offer this a brief inspiration for some passing by and for others to sit down and enjoy the music.
Music for train stations was inspired by music ambient sound created by Brian Eno, a musician who spent anxious and boring hours waiting for flights. He created the music to help soothe his nerves. And now, his creation is helping soothe the nerves of other travelers.
The series is about adding a more relaxing environment to what is a kind of stressful environment, which is a train station where people are rushing around from place to place. And so we're adding this layer of sounds that's a little bit different than what you would hear on a normal day.
The series, which features a DJ and a live musical performance, is both an homage to Eno and a contemporary interpretation of his concept, applied within the architectural splendor of Union Station.
The idea of music for train stations is music that blends in the background, music that it's made more to break the stresses, the anxieties of traveling, of being in a rush, meeting a deadline, getting to a place on time.
A musical departure for both travelers and visitors alike. The music plays from 4:00 to 6:00 PM every Friday in March. While it's your last chance to see the work of an iconic architect up close, celebrating the life of a female pioneer during Women's History Month, and enjoying the classical sounds of German composer Johann Sebastian Bach during your commute. All this in this week's Things to Do. Frank Gehry's iconic architecture has transformed cityscapes all over the world, our own included, thanks to Walt Disney Concert Hall. LACMA is honoring the LA-based architect with a career-spanning retrospective. Though Gehry's creativity seems so effortless, The Simpsons lampooned his design process as simply crumpling up a piece of paper. There's actually a considerable amount of technology behind his works. The exhibition focuses on the development of these digital design and fabrication programs, along with the architect's relationship with urbanism. The exhibit comes to a close on March 20th, so don't miss out. For more, visit lacma.org. March is Women's History Month, and this year's theme is "Women Inspiring Innovation Through Imagination," celebrating women in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Visit the North Hollywood Amelia Earhart Branch Library and pay tribute to Amelia Earhart, the famous female aviator, after which the branch was renamed, who lived in Toluca Lake in the years prior to her disappearance. Earhart flew alone across the Atlantic, the first female to do so. She also helped form an organization for female pilots, counseled women at universities on career paths, and was a supporter of equal rights for women. She vanished in the Pacific Ocean in 1937 while attempting to fly around the world. The North Hollywood Library is located at 5211 Tahanga Avenue in North Hollywood. As far as obscure holidays go, this one is arguably the most sophisticated. Founded by cellist Dale Henderson under the streets of New York City, Bach in the Subways Day takes place annually on the birthday of German composer Johann Sebastian Bach, to bring public enthusiasm to the beautiful and increasingly forgotten art of classical music. On March 21st, as well as the previous two days, soundtrack your commute with free performances throughout Union Station, train platforms, and other public spaces, with everything from an organ recital to a flute choir. Visit bachinthesubways.org for performance details and locations. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacave.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives, and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo. And you're watching Channel 35, Your City, Your Channel.
Members, please report to the council chambers. Sargent, I need one more. No, we're good. Good morning. Good morning to everyone. Today is Friday, March 18th. I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 AM, and the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll? In fact, wait a minute. Shhh. Please take your seats so that we can begin our work for today. Now, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Blumenfield Bonin, Busciano, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiser moves. Mr. Price seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds. Next?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1A.M. for two weeks to April 1st, and 1Q and 1T for 30 days to April 15th.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue?
Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed. Items B, D, H, J, N, W, X, Z, and AH, as the liens were paid in full. Receive and file AC, AF, and AQ, as the properties were determined to be owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and exempt from lien processing procedures. 1M, because the lien was rescinded by the department.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Mr. Fuentes?
Counsel President, if we could continue item 1C, 1J, 1L, and 1A.M. for two weeks.
Okay, that would be April 1st.
Wow, yeah, not 2AM.
Okay, let's continue.
Additionally, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that the lien amounts be reduced on the following items. On G, reduce the On G, reduce the lien to $9,189.39. On R, reduce it to $1,758.45. A.L., reduce the lien to $1,288.56. A.S., reduce it to $4,677.65. A.T., reduce it to $580.56. And A.O., reduce it to $3,660.35.
Okay, so again, without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 2 are items noticed for public hearing, and the Office of Finance recommends that Item 2 be received and filed, since the taxpayer submitted a payment which satisfies the liability, and the case is settled in full.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes.
Let's hold those items. Let's continue.
Items 3 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 3, 4, and 8 have been submitted and circulated for council consideration.
Members, special, Mr. Fuentes. Item 3 for Mr. Fuentes. Why don't we prepare to vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, let's continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance on Item 4 will be held over to March 29th, unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Items 9 through 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Uh, do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on 9 and 10.
Okay. Now that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or a public comment?
All right. Okay, we're gonna take care of some business first. Why don't we take up Item Number 1? Mr. Spindler, Item Number 1. I do not see Mr. Spindler. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us, uh... We do have a card from Mr. Walsh as well on Item Number 1.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Blogging also at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDem. Hollywood Dems. My card has two legs. It runs around and tries to hide from Herb. Uh, Number 1, hearing protests to building and safety. Again, uh, I'm not known for praising city council. You keep forgetting when I praise you, but I think when it comes to nuisance abatement and other code violations, the city of Los Angeles is head and shoulders over any of the surrounding cities like Pasadena or Glendale. These are liens which mean that they have not paid their fines, and therefore, they are going to have their property attached, to a certain extent. And you see, there are quite a number of liens here. It goes 1, 2, 3, 26. There's about 35 liens here. Some of them are quite high, $31,000 for MGA Entertainment, continuing from council meeting February 19. These are important, and I know it's excruciatingly painful when I say you do a good job, but I'm afraid I have to say it, because everything I say is true. HollywoodHighlands.org, visit us.
Thank you, members. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Do we have a Shayler Trent? Shayler Trent. Please come forward. Shayler Trent. Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to request a continuation on the property of 2219 South Orange Drive.
How long do you need, Trent?
30 days, sir.
Uh, so I'll tell you what, I will do that. So, uh, you'll have until April 15th. And then, where is, uh... You see the gentleman with the black vest? Maybe you have a conversation with him, and we can begin to work on your concern. So officially, your item is continued to April 15th.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you for coming down. Now let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, let's now move to Item 10. Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, Item 10.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn. This is a final track map, uh, for the parcel located at 4435 North Camelia in, uh, I believe it's North Hollywood, right near me in Moore Park. And I glanced at the map, um, a little bit. As it appears, sir, this is a takedown what's currently there, which is on sort of several lots, and I'm fairly sure that the individual is gonna be making a larger property, a larger house. And they are paying some customary quimby fees, and, you know, it's very hard to tell if this is going to be a little McMansion that's been slipped through, or if it's gonna be one of the condo things because of the way the city file is organized. But I can just simply say this, that land use decisions in Studio City and North Hollywood have come under enormous controversy. We have had a council district office that has been unrelentingly helpful to individuals trying to make small changes to their, um, you know, zoning and such. They have been extremely helpful, to the horror of many local neighborhood groups. I mean, I'm not gonna get into the minutia of that, because it would be off point. But certainly, these little decisions that are always the fault of another agency, or if we only, oh, he was two weeks early, had we waited, you know, we can't stop him, it's so bad. And what it has resulted, sir, is in a real, um, a kind of a degradation of the community life. I think there's a recall for some of the people involved here. There's all sorts of difficulties. And, sir, I think it needs a bit of leadership from Mr. Weezer. Because Mr. Weezer, who had said goodbye to Mr. Legrand recently, is the one who really, up in plum, has an opportunity to be an advocate for the people in the local communities. But unfortunately, we have seen towers, we have seen development. It is, we all want to improve and move things forward, but we have just simply let the people down in Studio City and North Hollywood, Valley Village, Valley Glen and such. So I, I'm very sorry. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
All right. Mr. Spindler, on Item 9. Mr. Walsh? John Walsh? Mr. Walsh?
Starts the meeting 20 minutes late, and he makes me run to the microphone.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh. And maybe since you speak so often, you should sit closer to the mic. Go ahead.
Yeah, and maybe you should...
No, 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 don't get off the subject.
You asked me...
Okay, you're off the subject, last time.
Uh, resolutions, various properties on the REIT. This, again, is Number 9, and, uh, we will, uh, we believe that you're doing a good job on the rent escrow. Remember, if the landlord doesn't repair violations, you go to the city, and then the landlord doesn't, you don't pay to the landlord anymore. You pay your rent to the city until the landlord repairs things. They don't want you to know that up there. Spit my face.
Mr. Spindler? Okay, let's prepare to vote. Uh, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
We'll do Item 2. Mr. Walsh, we're on Item 2. Go ahead, sir.
Number 2. Sir, who are you talking to? Number 2 is, uh, right up here, and that is John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. And Number 2 is approval to record the liens against taxpayers for unpaid taxes. This is, uh, again, uh, this is Item 2, and it speaks for itself. Again, on this issue of unpaid taxes, you do an excellent job. You know what you can do with your extra minute and 25 seconds? Put a little grease on it beforehand.
Mr. Previn?
Good morning, Council President Wesson. Uh, it is Eric Previn from CD2. This is not a casual matter. This is the Office of Finance. I think recently, we appointed Claire Bartels to take over. This is a group that's been struggling a little bit in terms of making reports about who's paying their taxes and who's not on request from the public. But setting that aside, this is an instance where we are celebrating today, because today, MGA Entertainment, Inc., is, uh, Mr. Englander, who knows this group well, and certainly Ms. Martinez, because this is in CD6, sir. This is for the CD6 tax problem that MG Entertainment, Inc. had. Now, the problem was minor, because this is a very robust provider of jobs, and those little brats dolls with a Z, sir, they're very cute, but they're, it's a big business. So these guys are trusted partners, and they're providing a lot of good stuff in the valley. Now, unfortunately, sir, this lien, which is now being finally settled, and I assume for the full rate, was pending for a while, which means we had to come after them and explore the use of city resources. Now, the problem, sir, is, this is a group that has been greased along out in 20,000 Prairie, in, uh, near, in Mr. Englander's district, I believe, where they have a, uh, he's got permission to do 660 rental units. And, you know, the public raised up the little hand, like, hey, what about, are we gonna do some affordable on that?
Stay on the subject, Mr. Previn.
And the point there is that by, by not providing any affordable housing, just providing $200,000 to one little nonprofit...
Stay on the subject, Mr. Previn.
Explaining the context of this...
No, stay on the subject, Mr. Previn.
Entertainment, Inc., it has a lien. They also received an incredible entitlement. That is a relevant piece of information. Mr. City Attorney, would you please advise? Thank you. And the reality, sir, is that we should be doing more in this space, as the Integrity Initiative and many others have been saying, that when we are providing great, um, sort of, uh, facility to a title and to these groups, they should be paying taxes, because you just collected from about 30 people...
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Spindler? Mr. Englander?
Before we, uh, we go to the public comment on this, and I know we already had one incorrect speaker just speak, completely way off the subject, I just wanted to clarify the record of what happened with this, so the other speakers know as well. This was a lien, actually, that was put on in error. In error, because in fact, the, um, the applicant, or the person, uh, the business, in this case, it was a business, paid it, and the city didn't credit it back. They brought in a copy of their canceled check, um, and they brought that copy in and showed they paid it a year ago, and it was just an accounting error on the city side. So it wasn't a dispute, there's no settlement, and I just wanted to clarify that, so people know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Spindler.
Exactly. Thank you to the midget for pointing that out.
Stay on the subject.
This is the biggest load of garbage. This does not belong here, this lien. It's wrong. Read it, everybody here, from the Persian community, read what they've done to these people. What they're doing to businesses with these crazy liens. No paperwork, nothing, nothing. You just keep taking and taking and taking money from people who need it. These people need this money. You don't need this money, but these businesses, like this company, need the money. And they pay with a canceled check, and you will not honor it. It's called reciprocity. L.A. City is in L.A. County, it's reciprocity. You cannot have a duality of liens, you cannot have a duality of business licenses, unless you're in the unincorporated county area and require a license from the Board of Supervisors. This is a city issue. He paid it, it was paid, it was incorrectly marked, and now we have to wait till today. The embarrassment, the shock of the guests here, knowing that the city steals money from lawful businesses, that it's ran by criminal thieves, thieves that people...
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
Right. There needs to be a process to get rid of these liens. These people, when they produce prima facie evidence that it's been paid, they must be suspended, no more interest, no more liens. This stuff has to stop. There's people in this council that know what I'm talking about. You know what I'm talking about, but you sit there, and you look the other way. Stop these liens, vote no on this lien.
Thank you, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, don't we have a 112-vote item? We have 12 members. What number was that?
Yes, that's Item Number 4, which has an ordinance.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration, Item Number 4. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. Fuentes, are we ready on item three?
Our candidate, Mark Gold, to the center table. Colleagues, as Mr. Gold is making his way to the center table, I'd like to extend my well wishes to him and my excitement for his candidacy to the Metropolitan Water District. You are looking at a lifetime Bruin that is very, very important to UCLA, so much so that he was inducted into the Public Health, the Hall of Fame at the City of, at UCLA, the UCLA School of Public Health Hall of Fame. And he was also recognized by the James Irvine Foundation and received their very prestigious Leadership Award. Mr. Gold is a, a big part of the UCLA Institute of Environment and Sustainability. He runs it, and we have the opportunity of having him serve not just the City of Los Angeles, but the Metropolitan Water District with your favorable vote today. Colleagues, you know that water is an important issue. We've been talking an awful lot about it with respect to the drought, but the expertise that Mr. Gold is going to bring to the conversation is larger than water supply. His expertise ranges into stormwater issues, into contamination issues. He is a real expert, and we will benefit tremendously as having him being one of our stewards at NWD, and I'm really excited to have you there. It's gonna not just help shape how the Metropolitan Water District operates, but it's going to lend the advocacy that you've had for so long at Heal the Bay and other institutions. They'll benefit from that. So colleagues, I urge an iVote, and I was gonna ask Mr. President if Mr. Gold would share a couple of words with us about his vision for MWD and what his participation there will look like.
Okay, so if I can get you to hold for one second, I want to recognize Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree with our Energy and Environment Chairman, Mr. Fuentes. I believe that Mark Gold is literally the best choice and the most qualified person in the county to do this job. I'm very excited that he's willing to take, to take on the time commitment, and it's not an easy task, but you are the perfect person for it, and I thank you for your willingness to serve.
Floor is yours.
First of all, thank you so much for your kind words, and thank you, obviously, for the mayor for this, this great opportunity. I'm very excited to, to, to be part of the MWD contingent, the directors representing the City of L.A., because we really have a tremendous task ahead of us in moving forward on local water and trying to be more sustainable with our local water supplies. As everybody knows, during these drought years, 89% of our water is imported from more than 250 miles away, and that's not sustainable. We know it's not sustainable, and so I think there's a tremendous opportunity to work with the City of Los Angeles, with the council, with the mayor's office, and the directors representing the City of L.A. to really move Metropolitan Water District in a manner that's gonna help the City of L.A. be more self-sufficient on their water supply and all the additional benefits that that provides us with, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, members, prepare to vote on this item. Let's open up the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, now, if we have a special guest with us today, the city clerk from the City of Inglewood, Yvonne Horton, welcome. Let's give Yvonne, the city clerk of Inglewood, a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Let, Madam Clerk, let's recess, the regular, go into the special.
Blumen Philbonne, Busqueino, Sedia, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Caretz, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rue, Wesson, 14 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, now, let's, how are we gonna proceed with these few items?
The items 11 and 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 11 and 12 have been submitted and circulated for council consideration.
Mr. Rue. Okay, we'll hold that.
And there is a request to continue item 12 to March 29th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Let's vote on the one item. In fact, no, Mr. Rue? You called item?
Eleven.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise, and I wanted to recognize a lot of the after-school programs that are here joining us today, that in support of the resolution that we are trying to support here at the Los Angeles City Council. And I'd like to recognize, and if, and when I call your name, if you guys could stand, A World Fit for Kids, After-School All-Star Los Angeles, ARC, EduCare Foundation, Partnership for Children and Youth, Think Together, Woodcraft Rangers. And I just want to recognize all these after-school programs. Let's give them a round of applause.
Where's the Woodcraft Rangers? Where are the Rangers?
The many hard work, the many hard-working board members, staff, teachers, and students, and former students who are all here together to, to join us in support, because the legislature, California State Legislature, is currently considering AB 2663, which would appropriate additional funds for the California After-School Education and Safety Programs. AB 2663 would, would keep effective after-school programs accessible for children and families and will also increase educational outcomes for students in LAUSD. And I just want to mention, Mr. President, I benefited from the free meals, lunch, lunch programs, and the after-school programs. It kept me out of trouble, it kept me in a safe space where I could congregate and play with my friends, and if we're serious about keeping our youth safe and healthy, creating an educated and competitive workforce, a strong and stable middle class in the future, be proactive on drug prevention, homelessness, gang prevention, we need to support our children. Our after-school pro-
And of course, our after-school programs that, that augments our educational system.
With that, colleagues, I ask for your support and your iVote. Thank you. For seconding.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President, for seconding the motion.
My pleasure. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, now, on item 13, we will send back to the Rules Committee. So I believe we, Madam Clerk, we can adjourn the special, return to the regular, correct?
That's correct.
Well, you have your priorities straight.
I got my priorities, yeah. Okay, everything's good? All right. Love you too, honey. Okay, bye. All right, sorry about that interruption. She says, she sends her love.
I, I always take my wife's call, Mr. Englander. So you're a very smart man.
Mr. Wesson, I always take your wife's call, too. All right, with that, the floor is yours.
Anyway, today is Pet Adoption Friday, and before we start our Naruze celebration, I wanted to take advantage of this great crowd that we have here today in the council chambers and present to you Cindy. Okay, now Cindy is not only drop-dead gorgeous, but she's looking for a home. Cindy has all of her shots, she's ready to go home today. She's about, how old, Arlene?
One year old.
How old?
One year.
She's, she's still a pup, she's a year, she's one-year-old, again, ready to go today, and she's a?
Tibetan terrier.
A Tibetan terrier? All righty then. We at the City of Los Angeles have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to our puppies. So what we're trying to do today is to find a home for Cindy. Standing with me today is Arlene, one of our great workers from the Animal Services, and she personally picks out the animals that she brings to council, the ones that we ask you to adopt. So I'm gonna have Arlene kinda show, wait, where are you? There she is. But I have Arlene kinda show her around. We will be, Cindy will be in the back for a minute. And members and people that are here with us today, you're doing more than adopting a companion animal that will give you unconditional love. When you adopt Cindy today, and I'm being very positive, you're saving her life. We do have shelters, we do the best we can to get as many dogs adopted as we can, but that is a very challenging task. So I'm asking for anyone that can hear me, anyone that's watching us on television, anyone that's here in the chambers today, to please save a life and take Cindy home with you today. So, Arlene, maybe we can get one of our Naruze revelers to fall in love with Cindy and take her home today. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you so very much.
All right, no, thank you very much. 100% adoption rate. I believe Mr. Galpren, Ron Galpren's here, he wants, he was looking very, very closely, our controller at the dog here. You might want to go visit in the back and... All right, so with that, let's go ahead and take the next item. Oh, yeah, actually, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Weezer for a special presentation. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and if I could ask the foundation members from the Naruze Celebration Foundation to please come up and join us? And our controller's here, welcome. Good to see you. And ladies and gentlemen, we have these beautiful flowers here in these chambers. We know what time of year it is, we know the special celebration that we've been doing for some time now here, and I want to just simply say to all of Los Angeles, happy Naruze, everyone. And as many of you already know, Los Angeles has always been a melting pot of cultures, from its early years as a destination for American travelers to its current role as an international hub. Angelinos represent a variety of countries and cultures, and today, we gather to embrace our diversity and celebrate our multi-ethnic communities. And I'm honored to join my colleagues, friends, and community members on this very special day of celebration in light of the beginning of spring with Naruze, the Persian New Year, a day celebrated throughout Los Angeles and across the globe for transcending nationality and promoting the values of peace and solidarity between generations and within families. Here in Los Angeles, Iranian-Americans are one of the most entrepreneurial groups, with a self-employment rate of 22%. About 50% of all working Iranian-Americans are in professional and managerial occupations. And let's welcome our mayor. Welcome, Mayor Gersetti. We know it's a special day when the mayor comes to visit us and celebrate the New Year with our Persian-American community. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. And I want to acknowledge the many Iranian-Americans today as college deans, CEOs in corporate America, senior executives at Fortune 500 companies, top scientists in NASA, executives in the Silicon Valley, and so much more. They are also some of our, your city engineers, information technology professionals and managers, and many, many other employments in the City of Los Angeles. Interestingly, the diversity in their ethnic and religious background represents the vitality of diversity within the Persian community. Many of the Iranian-Americans in the city entered civil service and have proudly served the City of Los Angeles for over two decades, and at this time, I would like to ask our Persian city employees to please stand and be recognized. Thank you very much for your contributions to the City of Los Angeles. Through the Naruze celebration, the Persian-American community brings a rich tradition to the City of Los Angeles that embodies the principle that each individual's thinking, speaking, and conduct should always be virtuous. It promotes compassion for our fellow human beings irrespective of ethnicity or religion. Along with the celebration of Naruze each year, the Persian-American community of Los Angeles reaches out to all of our diverse communities and contributes to forming citywide relationships and bonds that truly make Los Angeles special. And at this time, I would like to thank the Naruze Celebration Foundation and the many individuals that were involved in making today possible. Every year, we look forward to the beautiful decorations and spread that we see in the rotunda. Special thank you to Hamid Ebedat and Baman Majalal. You all continue to impress us each and every year. Give them a big round of applause. May we all be blessed in this coming year. May all Angelinos find happiness, success, and prosperity in the Persian New Year. Happy New Year, Naruze Mora, Mobarak. And now, let me invite up to the microphone a friend that has been helping to organize this event each and every year, Councilmember Caretz.
All right, Mr. Caretz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Weezer, for all your good efforts in making this happen every year. Salaam, everyone. Ateesho Mobarak. I'm thrilled to join you here to celebrate Naruze, where we can celebrate the blessings of the New Year. And as you know, I have the pleasure of representing Council District Five, which is home to the largest contingent of Persians in Los Angeles. And five years ago, we renamed the intersection of Wilkins and Westwood Persian Square, giving the Persian community the recognition that it deserves and recognizing the fact that the first Persian business in the City of Los Angeles was opened at that intersection. A number of additional Persian businesses and residents have come to the area, possibly as a result. We're proud to have many of the businesses on Westwood Boulevard be owned and operated by individuals of Persian descent. The Persian community, like other robust, thriving immigrant communities, helps make our city great, and my hope is to make each Naruze celebration bigger and better each year to honor your heritage. Our local Persian businesses and residents in Westwood have been a magnificent gift to all of us in the Fifth Council District, and have blessed and enriched us with a dynamic culture and commerce and priceless, priceless friendships. And I want to acknowledge the fact that the unofficial mayor of Westwood, Alex Helmy, has joined us here. And he is leading the effort to put together a Naruze celebration on Westwood Boulevard on March 27th, so I hope that we'll see all of you there. Also, I want to recognize the, the late Azat Delajani for all of his great work as a leader of, of the Persian business community, as a key figure in bringing back Broadway with the, the Broadway Theaters, and also for his help in creating the Persian synagogue in West Hollywood. So let's give him a posthumous hand. I also want to acknowledge that there's been an effort going on for several years to create a statue to one of the great historic figures, Cyrus, in Century City. That has moved along, and we are now hoping that next Naruze in 2017, that we'll be able to celebrate the installation of that statue as well. So Los Angeles is a city that's been made so much greater by the presence of the Persian community, and I wish you all a happy Naruze.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, someone who needs no introduction, our mayor for this great city, who is a great friend of the Persian-American community, Mayor Eric Gersetti.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, great to be back here, and Naruze Mobarak, a happy new year to everybody. It is so wonderful to be here. This is always the day which we have some of the best food, and the seats in city council look the most beautiful because every single year, that spring harvest and the flowers that is brought in by the Persian community really enlivens these chambers, and it's a fitting metaphor for the way the Persian community has enlivened and enriched this city. The Persian community that immigrated here from Iran is the highest educated group of immigrants this city has ever received. Born out of tragedy for many, it was a great boon to this city, and I think this city similarly embraced and opens its arms in one of the great migrations this world has seen in the last century, when so many professionals came here, folks who today are working on reducing traffic in our Department of Transportation, people who today are making investments, creating jobs, people who today have some of the best-listened-to radio stations and television programs, not just here in Los Angeles, but that gets broadcast to the world. And it's also fitting that we remember the way that the Persian history is something for all of us in humanity to celebrate. The Greeks often claim that they are where democracy was born, and sometimes we accept that, but if you go further back, it's actually the Persians who had democracy first, who have added beautiful poetry and art that enriched our lives, that started the tradition of history, of writing, a written history, of the numerals that we use in mathematics, the scientific innovation. So we celebrate both the common humanity of what spring represents, of us, a new start, a new beginning, and of course, what Naruze means to all of us focusing on our families and our loved ones. But we also see it as a moment to thank the Iranian-American community and for all that they've given us. My parents went on their honeymoon to Iran after they got married and told me stories as a young boy about how beautiful this country and its people were. We've been so blessed that so many Iranian-Americans now here in Los Angeles have been a part of making L.A. great and strong, and so I want to say, as long as I'm your mayor, I'm squarely in your corner and beyond. Thank you for the- Thank you for the friendship. Thank you for the work. And here's to a very happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with us also today is another great friend of the Persian-American community is our controller, Ron Galperin. Ron.
Good morning, and Nourz Piroz. Every immigrant group that comes to Los Angeles really brings their own precious gifts and really helps add to the kaleidoscope and to the fabric of Los Angeles. And that is so very, very true for our Iranian, for our Persian community, which contributes so much to Los Angeles and has really found great success here. And here we are to celebrate Nourz, which is an annual reminder of some very profound and timeless lessons. On the surface, Nourz, which really means "new day" literally, celebrates a new year, but it's actually much more than that. It's a secular tradition, but one that has a lot of ties to other faiths around the world. It's really interesting, when you look at the symbology of the plate on the tables of those who celebrate Nourz, there are all these wonderful symbols that remind me a lot of the seder plate. There's also the egg, which reminds you of Easter. There are all these connections that tie us together of many different faiths. And it's about uniting people in goodwill. And wouldn't it be wonderful if the rest of the world was a lot like Los Angeles, in which people of so many faiths and so many traditions and so many backgrounds actually live together in peace and in harmony, in togetherness and in working together? So hopefully, we can continue to set an example for the rest of the world. There are just so many great contributions that the Iranians and Persians have made to Los Angeles. By the way, as the mayor mentioned, a very overwhelming number of our traffic engineers are actually of Persian descent. So by the way, we're counting on you to fix all of our traffic problems. But here we are, celebrating the beginning of spring, and this holiday is emblematic of hope, of gratitude, of forgiveness, and of redemption. So we come together to ring in the New Year, and hopefully I pronounce this correct, Edesha Mubarak. Happy New Year to all.
I think you have the best pronunciation so far, Mr. Galperin. Well, thank you very much, and it's great to see our citywide elected leaders here today to celebrate this very special occasion. And now I'd like to take the time to introduce a very special guest, who is now serving her first term on the Long Beach City College Board, having been elected trustee for Area Three in April of 2014. She is a first-generation immigrant who grew up in a hard-working family that raised her with the guiding principles of the American dream. She moved to the U.S. during the Iran-Iraq war with her family in pursuit of a better life. She is the only female to graduate from her class with a Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering from the University of Tehran. Let's give her a round of applause for that. She has nearly two decades of experiencing construction, environmental, water, and infrastructure projects. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the Honorable Sunny Zia.
Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Weezer, and Mayor Garcetti, and honorable Councilmembers. It's an honor for me to be here today. I am one of the first, one of the many first-generation Iranians who fled a war-torn Iran in pursuit of the American dream. We came here because of one man's dream. My father. His dream was for us to come here and live a life of freedom and dignity. Now, both my parents sacrificed everything for this dream and for us to have a better life. Often, I would ask my father, "Why are you doing this?" He would say, "Because I want you and your sister to grow up in a country where anything is possible." America has no limits, and you deserve that. That was his American dream. While many told him that they can't afford to luxuriate him in a silly, sophomoric dream, he still believed, and my mother, sister, and I finally made it here. I remember my father, who had to stay behind, tell me while promising that he'll be coming soon, to not worry, because "I was going to the land of perfection, heaven on earth," he would say, "where it's almost like the trees have golden grapes coming out of them." Now, we were one of the not-so-fortunate Persians who didn't convert their money to diamonds and jewelry to come here. We came here with the clothes on our backs, and the first thing we did was go to a farm town called Fresno. I remember calling my dad and saying, "They sure have grapes, but it ain't golden." Those early years were very tough for me and my family, because it was a very difficult time that we all remember as Iranian-Americans who lived in the '80s, where Iranians were being targeted based on their identity. They were victims, we were victims of hate crimes and had to hide our identities. While I never hid my identity and was always proud of being Iranian and continued to be, it still gives me chills and breaks my heart to this day, remembering that not-so-distant past. Never did I dream that one day I would be standing here before you, celebrating the Persian New Year, Nourz, which means "a new day," and indeed, it is a new day where we have overcome that past. Thank you, Mr. Mori Mustafavi, if you could please stand, for nominating me, Mr. Hamid Ebedad, for your tireless work, my wonderful aunt and uncle, who are also here today. I owe a lot of my success to them, beyond my parents. Thank you for being here and for your faith in me. And thank you, members of Council, for giving me the gift of witnessing this day, where together we are honoring the Persian tradition of celebrating peace, love, and family. As the next-generation Iranians, we really owe our forefathers, the Mayor Delshads, the David Nahais, and the Joe Shoshanis, who paved the way for people like me to see this day, where so much awareness and education has happened, that it is part of the fabric and culture of our society. May this Nourz bring you and your families more love, happiness, and the audacity to dream. I hope you will dare to dream with me in some day, celebrating Nourz together in Iran. May God bless you. May God bless the Persian people, and may God continue to bless the land of limitless possibilities, these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zia, and certainly you brought forward the sentiment and emotion that many of us feel about this great city. And it's great in this celebration that that sentiment and emotion comes out in a very expressive form, as you did through Nourz and the Persian community here today. Thank you so, so much for your words. And next, I would like to bring up Mr. Very-
Well, you know, Mr. Weezer, I do have members that want, you want to let your colleagues go?
If they would wish to speak now, we have a couple of more speakers. If they want to go now or after, that's fine, either way.
Okay, then I just want to make sure that they don't throw things at me, but they have agreed to go after your speakers.
Thank you very much.
They're nice today.
Well, they certainly won't throw these beautiful flowers at you, Mr. President. But next, I would like to bring up Mr. Larry Adamson, who is the current CEO of the Midnight Mission. The Midnight Mission, as we all know, has served the disadvantage of Los Angeles for over 100 years. It is the oldest continuously operating human service organization in Los Angeles, and for that, they should be commended. They have served over 1 million meals to the homeless population and have turned around countless lives. Midnight Mission's service includes a 12-step recovery program, job training, as well as education and work programs. These services offer a compassionate bridge to productive lives for hundreds of thousands in the Los Angeles area. This year, the Midnight Mission will be serving lunch to the residents of Skid Row in lieu of serving lunch to members of today's event. Please welcome Larry Adamson from the Midnight Mission.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Mr. President, members of the Council, I'm Larry Adamson, the current CEO, and after 19 years, I'm going to be retiring, but I did want to be here today with probably some of our greatest supporters standing with me here to say to all of you that Nourz is more to the Iranian people than just a celebration of a new year. One of its fundamental principles is to give back and to build stronger communities. And today, if you can join us anytime between 3:00 and 6:00 in Skid Row at Ground Zero, they will be demonstrating firsthand their commitment to building stronger communities. When we close down Sixth Street, can cause traffic problems, when we close down Sixth Street, and we have our Nourz celebration for those who are, in fact, less fortunate among us, and in fact, the least fortunate among us here, our homeless population of Los Angeles, we turn to them and we say to them, "God bless you for building stronger communities," whether it be your original homeland or here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your 19 years of service.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Larry, for your work and for all the work that the Midnight Mission does here and throughout the region. We really, really appreciate it. And at this moment, before I introduce the next speaker, I'd like to take a moment to commend and remember one of my longtime friends and a friend of the city of Los Angeles, one of the founders of the Nourz Foundation, Mr. Azat Delajani, who passed away a few years ago. His son, Shiram, is here with us today, as well as his wife and his daughter, who are here. Let's welcome to these council chambers. Thank you so much. Michael could not be with us here today, but this really continues the legacy of giving back, as was mentioned by Mr. Adamson. A dozen years ago, Mr. Delajani had a vision. His vision was to make the Nourz celebration worldwide. He started implementing his vision with personally founding and financing the Nourz Foundation and held the first Nourz celebration ever in these chambers. Today, after more than a decade of celebrating this event here in this wonderful chamber, I am happy to announce that this event is celebrated all throughout the United States, from New York and Washington, D.C., to Houston and Dallas, and from San Francisco and Sacramento to Irvine and San Diego. And for that, we shall all remember visionaries like Azat Delajani, who cared about the city and will always be remembered as messengers of diversity, tolerance, and humanity. May God bless him. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Poriya, I should know that. I used to call you by your last name, Mr. Abasi, which is much simpler to pronounce. Poriya is the former general manager of the Los Angeles Convention Center, no stranger to these chambers and to the city of Los Angeles. He is a current Senior Vice President and Regional Executive Director of Phoenix Houses of California, as well as a board member for the Nourz Foundation. He will make a few comments in Farsi, the native language of Iran, for the Farsi-speaking audience of this program that is being televised. Welcome back, and Mr. Abasi, before you come up, I want to acknowledge the work you did at the Convention Center when you were the general manager. You did a phenomenal job in turning that place around, making the books more transparent and accountable to the public. Thank you so much for the work you've done for the city of Los Angeles, and welcome
Welcome, old friend. Welcome back.
Thank you. Dear friends, members of the Los Angeles City Council, elected officials, once again, you have honored our community through your recognition of Nourz, this most benevolent symbol of our heritage, history, culture, and our hopes and aspirations. What you started in this sacred chambers 13 years ago now has been adopted in multiple city halls and state capitals all around our nation, including the halls of Congress. Thank you for recognizing the strength of understanding, the energy of appreciating diversity, and the collective gains of the Los Angeles communities, when we purposefully and willfully value the differences among us. Through your actions, you've made all of us so very proud to be Angelinos. Last night, I asked Kian Anchemia, my son and daughter, as to what Nourz means to them. This is what they shared with me, and they asked me to share with you. Nourz is a celebration of all the good in nature and all that is right in humankind. It reminds us of not only the hope, but the fact that after a cold winter of discontent and a year with its share of calamity and difficulty, for so many people, every Nourz, every year, we have the hope of making things better. This is what you, the Los Angeles City Council, have done, allowing a 16-year-old and a 13-year-old, both born and raised here in Los Angeles, and so many like them, from so many backgrounds and cultures, find a connection and pride in their own heritage and to translate that pride in making Los Angeles an even greater metropolis, a city of hope, where every day can and is Nourz. You indeed deserve our gratitude and certainly a round of applause. May we all be blessed with health, love, and peace in the coming year, and may we all have ample opportunity to show and practice much care and compassion in the New Year. As this program is being broadcast worldwide to many Farsi-speaking nations around the world, with the president's permission, I would like to say a few words in Farsi. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, old friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a resolution we'd like to present at the end of the ceremony. If you could call on our colleagues, that'd be great.
All right, and I'll do that in just a second. I do want us to take a moment to acknowledge our former colleague, Tony Cardenas, who I think was a driving force behind this celebration. And we're also extremely proud of you, Mr. Weezer, for picking up the banner and having Nourz celebrations that are every bit as phenomenal as Mr. Cardenas is worth. I personally want to give a debt of gratitude to the Persian-American community, not only for all that you do for the great city of Los Angeles, but I have personal reasons. I want to thank the Barukin family. I've got mom and dad. Could you wave, mom? I want people to wave. They are the mom and dad of Jordan, Jordan Barukin, who works for me. Jordan is a very important person in my office where it relates to planning. And a lot of you don't understand that there's a short guy, my height, standing, Mr. Weezer, to your left, with glasses on, used to wear a tam, who's been one of my best friends and who has played a very influential role in my career, and that's Mori. And it's so good to see you again. Everybody, let's give Mori, he's with L.A. County, a round of applause. He's a phenomenal, phenomenal young man, a phenomenal friend, and a snazzy dresser. With that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. David Root.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in celebration of Nourz, the Persian New Year, which marks the beginning of spring, which usually occurs on March 21st or a day before or a day after, depending on where it's observed. But I also want to acknowledge that Nourz is not just a Persian celebration, but it's also celebrated by many people from all around the world, including the Balkans, South, West, and Central Asia. This is a time when friends and family gather and visit, eat traditional Persian food around the traditional hafsan table. Hopefully, I said that right? And the Persian community is strong and vibrant in the United States. They are 1.5 million strong, with nearly half of them living in the Los Angeles area. Based on the 2000 U.S. Census, 51% have attained bachelor degrees, with 1 in 4 holding a master's or doctoral degree, which is the highest rate among all ethnic groups. Per the Small Business Administration, yeah. My parents would be proud. Per the Small Business Administration, Iranians are the top 20 immigrant groups with the highest rate of business ownership, contributing substantially to our economy. But more personally, as an immigrant myself, I feel akin to the Iranian-American community. Its rich culture, heritage, history, family, struggle, and the hard work ethic. I am proud to support the Iranian-American community and be called a friend. And lastly, I'd like to recognize a- And lastly, I'd like to recognize a special and also proud Iranian-American who serves on my staff, Nikki Izari, Nikki, who is a City Hall veteran and is joined here today by her two sons. You guys could stand. Her parents, her sister who is expecting, and her sister's in-laws who flew in from Iran just to see the baby. Thank you, and thank you for joining us.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Nooruz, Pirooz. It is a pleasure to join in the celebration and to wish everybody a happy Nooruz. I'm just thrilled about it. It's a special holiday of service, of renewal. And I wanted to especially acknowledge that it is, as was said, there are Iranian-Americans throughout Los Angeles and all the way out in my district. And I want to acknowledge a couple of folks who've come out because I have a very large population, Persian population, out in the West Valley, particularly in Woodland Hills and Tarzana. And especially when folks make the hour-and-a-half trip from there to come here, I want to give them special acknowledgement. But more importantly, because we have with us a number of leaders in the Persian community. So I want to acknowledge the Artalons and ask Barbara and John to stand up, as well as Nadir Rafi. Where's Nadir? As well. Nadir's over there. I recognize them because they have really been part of the community and part of the leadership. And in particular, I want to say about John, Jose, you talked about folks being part of the city family. Well, John has been part of the city family for twenty years, was one of the first Iranian plan-check engineers in the city of Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety. And then he's gone on to be a businessman, community activist, and he and Barbara are just stellar parts of the community. And then the mayor mentioned how a number of the Persian community have gone on in the entertainment industry. And Nadir is a perfect example of that. He's appeared in dozens of films, received a degree in cinema and television from Cal State Long Beach, has been a newscaster and director for Iranian TV, and is currently the owner of Omid Iran TV, where he and John have a show. In fact, that was just, it was my pleasure to be on that show just last week. And that's a show where they're able to work to empower Iranian-Americans by raising awareness of the issues that surround us every day, as well as the issues in our local communities. So I want to thank them for being here. Thank all of you for being here. This is a wonderful celebration. And just say, "Nooruz Mubarak."
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise, just to, it's such a pleasure to experience the joy of Nooruz and that it's a shared celebration now, a shared cultural event, not just citywide, but nationwide. So thank you, Councilmembers Coretts and Weezer, for bringing this wonderful celebration to City Hall today. And whoever made these bouquets of flowers, wow, thank you so much. They're just lovely. I also want to acknowledge on my staff, a member who is a planning, a planner in my office of Iranian descent, and that is Amy Ablikhat. Amy, where are you? Right here. Again, thank you and a happy Iranian New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Kokorian.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and happy Nooruz, everyone. As the first Armenian-American ever elected to office in the city of Los Angeles, I think it's time that I speak on behalf of all Armenians and forgive the Persian community for defeating us in 451 at the Battle of Avaray. But of course, the common history of the Armenian people and the Persian people has been rich. We have such a shared experience, and Iran has been a place of refuge for so many from a troubled part of the world. And in the aftermath of the Armenian genocide, of course, Iran was the place that so many found peace and found escape. But throughout the centuries, Iran has been a place that welcomed so many communities, including that of my own heritage. So I think for that reason, we all share in the joy of Nooruz. The fact that so many of the Armenian-Americans of Los Angeles come to us, came to this country from Iran is another reason. But I think all of us, regardless of our background, can share in the significance of this holiday and its confirmation of the miracle of renewal. The fact that no matter how dark the winter, no matter how bleak things may be, spring always follows. And that's what Nooruz really stands for, I think, for so many of us. And I was moved when Sanizia was speaking about those dark days of the 1980s, because I well remember that time when I was a student at USC, along with so many other, so many Iranian students who were there with us. And I remember standing with those students when they were subjected to hate crimes and attacks for no reason other than their name and their ethnicity. And it was a horrible time. And we continue to experience some of that in our country today, when we have presidential candidates who are talking about excluding Muslims from this country. We still have that, we still have a time of inexcusable hatred. And yet, this country, as Ms. Zia also said...
Hold on, Mr. Kokorian. Would you, I'm not going to tolerate any disturbances. If you continue, I will remove you from the chambers. I'm so sorry, Mr. Kokorian. Continue.
No, thank you, Mr. President. Those comments are very well taken, and I welcome them. Thank you. We are a country where dreams can happen, and that's why, in the aftermath of those dark days, spring very much has come, I think, for the Iranian community here in Los Angeles. Just last month, the first Iranian-American ambassador of the United States of America was sworn in by President Obama when Aziz Arjy took that position to represent this country in international diplomacy in Sweden. So how far have we come from a time when Iranian-Americans were subjected to hate crimes to a place where an Iranian-American speaks for the President of the United States in foreign diplomacy? That really, to me, is a sign of renewal and of spring. I also want to recognize, take this moment to recognize, Dr. Armand Agakanyan over here, who is a member of the Burbank Unified School Board of Trustees and Iranian-Armenian, and another indication of the success that this community has had. And I want to say finally in closing, Tom, every time I used to recognize Nikki as a member of my staff, Tom LeBonde used to say, "Yeah, but I had her first." So I just want to say to Councilmember Root, you made a wise choice, but I also want to, you know, recognize Nikki for her contributions to this city. And I want to say too that I have entrusted my entire political career to two consecutive chiefs of staff who were born in Iran. My current chief of staff, Irina Brinosian, and my previous chief of staff, who next Monday will be celebrating Nooruz in the state capital, because he is now Adrien Nazarian, the first Iranian-born member of the California State Legislature. And he'll be leading the Nooruz ceremony in the state capital. So happy Nooruz, everyone.
Well said, Mr. Kokorian. Well said. Mr. Weezer, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Coretts had a few words to say before we close.
Oh, I just wanted to acknowledge my Persian community deputy and Westwood Field Deputy Jasmine Shimolien, who is here with her family. And I also want to acknowledge my good friend, Joe Shushani, Beverly Hills Commissioner.
Well, thank you very much. And certainly, it's a celebratory mood in here, and we want to acknowledge not only this new year, but again, all the contributions that Persians have made to the city of Los Angeles. It's always a great moment when we come to these chambers and acknowledge this, but it also reminds us of the great foundation upon which this city was built, its diversity, and to celebrate how it continues to open doors and be a city of opportunity for people from throughout the world. And on this special day, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to express our gratitude to the Persian-American community here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so, so much for your contributions, and happy Nooruz. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's give one more round of applause. Thank you all for what you've done. Thank you all for coming out. Maury, it's such a treat to see you today. Madam Clerk, I think we need to reconsider an item?
Yes, Item 1A.J. for reconsideration.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Fifteen eyes? Okay, we'll continue that. How long, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there's a request to continue it for sixty days to May 17th.
Okay, that brings us where?
To general public comment.
Okay, when things quiet a bit, we'll go into the general public comment. Hey, sweet Alice, good to see you. Thanks for spending time with us today, the great sweet Alice from Watts. I'm looking for, I think it's a, maybe it's a Kazul, last name begins with a B, a member of CCEA. Please come forward to the center mic. And we also have a Melanie. I cannot make out the last name. Wendy Harris. Just start making your way. Just wait. Okay, now, as we exit, could we please be quiet? Again, thank you all for coming. Let's keep it quiet. If I could have my first speaker come to the microphone? Identify yourself, the floor is yours.
Hi, sir. My name is Melanie LeBrack, and I'm from San Pedro, California. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the city council today. I have a severe case of lupus and autoimmune problems. I am disabled. And the reason I tell you this is our downtown in San Pedro, the sidewalks and the parks are littered with tents uninhabitable for someone like me, disabled, to be able to access the sidewalks. The parks are taken over with human fecal matter.
Hold on, ma'am. Sit down and get out of the center aisle. Show respect to the person that's speaking. Take your seat. Get up again, and you will be removed. Okay? You can start all over again. Just take your time.
Okay. With human fecal matter and urine everywhere, we have a lady today that was, it was posted on Facebook, that was on the bus stops taking a dump. She is naked. This is an ongoing occurrence with this particular person and several other mentally ill people that are roaming around the streets of San Pedro. This is a severe ADA issue as well as a public health issue, because I can't go into businesses or go into stores where these people are inhabiting and at...
Continue.
Our children see daily naked bodies and downtown in the streets, people shooting up in public, people having public sex, and it's right next to their school. We, you know, we need, police need to enforce laws, and they need to not have, be handcuffed not to be able to do it, because, you know, they're told that they can't because of some special circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if I could have my next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Gail Fleury, and I'm a stakeholder in San Pedro. You know, that little dangling chad at the end of L.A., where it falls into the ocean? While crime has risen in L.A. around 20%, it has risen in San Pedro almost 30%. We're beyond the capacity of our halfway houses, mental health clinics, and specialized organizations like Harbor Interfaith Services to control the sudden and devastating influx of homeless panhandlers and drug dealers in our tiny community. We may be at the end of L.A., but we are L.A., and we pay our taxes and work hard. We're every bit as important as the rest of L.A., and we deserve the services, the police, and the safety that our taxes pay for. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. So is this Wendy? Please come forward, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I am here to speak in support of Resolution 5611. Please, in your goal to assist the homeless, do not forget about us, the people of your community. Our quality of life has gone way down, and we're playing by the rules, and we're doing our best. In San Pedro, numerous sidewalks are completely taken over and inaccessible due to tents, shopping carts, and debris. These encampments are everywhere, parks, post offices, in front of businesses. The people in these encampments think that we are the trespassers, we are robbed, we are assaulted, we are threatened, our cars are broken into. And what about the concern for the handicapped? They are extremely limited where they can go due to blocked sidewalks. Banning tents, carts in between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. will help tremendously in the safety and health of all residents of Los Angeles. It will also be a big step in taking positive action in a town described by yesterday's Daily Breeze as the harbor of Skid Row.
Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker, and please identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Raquel Beard. I'm the executive director of the Central City East Association. We manage...
Oh, I apologize. Did I butcher your name? So I apologize.
Okay.
Go right ahead. You get your time all over again.
I'm the executive director of the Central City East Association. We manage the Business Improvement District that also includes Skid Row. I was here to talk about Item 12, but it was continued, and this is just too important not for me to share. I've stood here before you and told you that there is an outsized public safety crisis in Skid Row. I've told you that workers there have been threatened, intimidated, punched and beaten. Now it's happened to one of my employees. My bid worker was stabbed yesterday afternoon at the bus stop on his way home at Seventh and San Pedro. This worker is our dispatcher, the person who calls for emergency response for the medical and public safety emergencies that happen daily in Skid Row. The drug-crazed assailant is still out there. As he was fleeing, he ducked into a tent on San Pedro, no doubt to get rid of his weapon. Then he proceeded to flee. So what I am about to say is not politically correct, but it is very true. These encampments breed a culture of lawlessness. You have no rules, extremely constrained enforcement, and people who are mentally ill, high on heroin, meth, and crack, living on the sidewalks among parolees and drug addicts.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Akala. Come on, I see you. Come up to the mic. Mr. Akala, you're going the wrong way. Come on.
No.
No, there's no order. When I call you, come up. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Yes, it's Eric Previn. Sir, I was very disturbed today, because there were a number of items where individuals came down, members of the public, to address their council members. And because of the weird committee system that makes no sense today, in fact, Item 12, which is an important item, this 5611, people on both sides of the issue have a lot to say, and yet, it was already heard, and yet, it's being continued. This is insanity, sir, and I would ask you to consult with an outside attorney who could advise you as to how to follow the Brown Act, because Mr. O'Connell and whoever this guy is, who's doing an excellent job, by the way, thank you, sir, need to be corrected, okay? And I am going to help you. You must not turn away the public. There is no good reason. There is no good reason. Ask Mr. Kokorian, he'll study it carefully and report back, please, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Three deputies arrested for drunk driving. Two of them last week. Mr. Sadio's chief deputy, he also hit an MTA bus. Marquise Dawson's deputy, and of course, Herb Wesson's deputy from last year. And yet, you continue to vote yes on alcohol licenses. You don't deny any alcohol licenses, and the blood of the first person killed will be on all 30 of your hands. And I want you to know that we have something coming up soon called R2. It will try to steal a half-cent sales tax from you for worthless subway. Vote no on R2D2. Go to our website, HollywoodHighlands.org, and learn all about R2D2. And just keep drinking alcohol and just keep...
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Akala. Brian, are you here? Barajas, you're after one? Go ahead.
We are the voices of the people that are really telling you, we are disgusted with those disgusting bitches that come to downgrade the homeless. The homeless is everybody. Mr. Wesson, I'd like to see you on the street one of these days, actually doing your work. I'd like to see you reviewing the sidewalks. I'd like to see you putting toilets somewhere. I don't want to see you sitting around here making laws that take more money from people. I want to see Donald Trump. Oh, no, I don't want to see that asshole ever again. Somebody here reminded me of Donald Trump today. I don't remember who that was. Well, Englander? No. You're all a bunch of assholes. Bye.
Okay, Mr. Barajas, followed by Mr. Herman, Michelle Autry, Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Okay, I'm going to turn into your offices entitled, "You have totally failed, it's time to bow out." Essentially, what's the essence of our calamity right now? Well, it's very simple. I think that I can direct this to citizens themselves. I think our culture has degraded too far that it just seems like it's, you know, it's kind of worthless in a way to save this country on one hand, but I think on the other hand, this is where we, LaRush PAC, come in and actually, you know, take the leadership that doesn't, you know, doesn't really exist right now. Not in Obama, not Bush, not Trump, not Hillary, not Sanders, not any of them. Okay, so, larushpact.com.
Okay, so, next? Then I need, I'm looking for Ms. Autry, if you're still here.
Mr. President, as we all know, you've become a poverty pimp.
Please come forward. Hold your, hold your... Ms. Autry, please come forward, and then Mr. Spindler. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
You've become the worst poverty pimp in Los Angeles, sir. As you continue to remove people's belongings on public sidewalks, to discourage people who are homeless on the street to have any dignity, civil rights due process, that is really a horrible, harmful, fucked-up way of treating your constituents, who you neglected and oppressed for how many years? How many years have you seen these people on your fucking sidewalk and streets, and you've done nothing whatsoever? I digress to this vomiting issue, because it reminds me of you, Herb Wesson, little negro, who treats us so indiscriminately. You treat us so bad, you're just worse than Adolf Hitler, because you take us and throw us out of public comment and eliminate our process of speaking on Item 12, 13, and 1, you degradable president, Herb Wesson. Vote for Donald Trump. Ahhh.
At least I don't walk around with a rag over my face, Mr. Herman. No, now you're disrupting. Okay? Ms. Autry, come forward.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank you for recognizing me. There have been two meetings in a row that Mr. Dawson, Harris Dawson, has neglected to recognize me, which is in violation of my right to address the elected or appointed officials. So I do appreciate you in that acknowledgement, Mr. Wesson. And I filed a claim against the city because of your refusal to acknowledge me after I had legally and lawfully submitted my request to speak. So what I'd like to say is that in defense of the homeless people, this is a civil engineering. These people are homeless because they have been engineered to be that human harvest. I would be in the street after continued attempts of a hidden cadre to maintain the status quo for those powers that be, whether they are Zionist, Jewish, people, Mormons, who say, "I have too much in hiring this cadre to illegally enter my dwelling, put holes in my clothes, subjugate me with germ warfare." So I defend those people, and also, I request an opportunity to continue working with LA Cannon and other, other community-based organizations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Autry. If I could have Mr. Spindler now. Mr. Spindler, thank you.
What do we got here? People like me from the South? We got Marquise Dishing Cards on Black Women Trying to Speak at Meetings. Another poverty pimp. And then we got Felipe Fuentes, didn't vote on the rate hike, but showed up to Plum, discovered he was there and got his butt out of there. And what about this Englander running for supervisor? No on Mitchell Englander for the Board of Supervisors. I've been up in the Antelope Valley for two days, walking, riding my horse, and telling everybody, "There's an evil out there." Vote no on Mitchell Englander for the Supervisor District 5, anybody but him. And then there's that Janice Hawn back from the dead. Yes, they revived that dead bitch. No on Janice Hawn for the Board of Supervisors. And finally, please, throw Herb Wesson in prison, that goddamn nigger fool.
Thank you. And to the public, you know, we don't promote or support what some of our public speakers come and say. They have the right to say what's on their mind. And for those of you that are watching, I'm sure you can determine which one of them are idiots and which one of them are not. Mr. Ofero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for a reconsideration of Item 1V, and then to extend it for a couple of weeks. We're going to have a conversation with LED, the Department of Building and Safety, and sort some things out.
Let's vote on it. Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
And you'd like to continue it how long, Mr. Ofero?
For two weeks, Mr. President.
That would be April 1st.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O, I mean, Mr. Englander.
And as long as we have that, we reconsidered 1, and we have it open again, 1 AP for two weeks as well, please.
Let's vote on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote, and that also...
Fifteen eyes.
I'm sorry, Luigi. That also will be continued till April 1st. What other business is before this body? Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Time for announcements. I do have one quick announcement. Members, our 100% adoption rate is still going strong. Cindy was the, the young dog, Cindy was adopted today by one of our guests. So our 100% adoption record continues. Now, if we'd all please rise for adjourned motions, if all in the council would please rise, please rise to show your respect for those who passed on. I'm going to look to my right side, Mr. Rue's side, I do not see any. I'm now looking to my left side for adjourned motions. I do not see any members. This meeting is adjourned.